To order six P M Thursday, October twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty. So this is a especially scheduled planning board. Meeting, we have some some normal business to take care of, and then we also have the voting recommendations on the Z B A initiatives zoning initiatives. Not the Z B A, the zoning initiatives that were there. We're forwarding our recommendations on to the council. So we're going to go through a couple of items of business here, and then we're going to move on to on to the zoning questions. If anybody's recording, please let me know. We are recording for the town, but if anybody else is just like that. Okay, thank you. So we the first order of business is approval of the meeting minutes from October thirteenth. This was the 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 public hearing with the E D C. I wasn't at this meeting, although I've read the minutes. I so I can't attest directly to their accuracy, but the folks who were at the meeting, do you have any? Any comments, George?
Thank you, Charles. First, I wanted to check, are we going with just the four regular members? Or is one of the alternates being stepped up for voting purposes?
Let's see, so we've got we've got myself and you and Jamie and Jim. So that's four. So I could I could I saw that Amy was was at the was at the meeting. And if you would like to be raised to a voting member for the purposes of this evening's meeting.
Oh, no, that's that's not necessary. I I'm just getting back into the swing of things.
Okay, Mark, would you like to to join in for the you? You were at the meeting on the thirteenth, right?
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to vote.
Okay, great, so I'm gonna I'm gonna elevate you, Mark, to a to a full voting member, George.
And and then I will make a motion to approve the the minutes of October thirteenth.
Great. Second, anyone?
I'll second that, this is Jamie.
Okay, Jamie, any further discussion on the minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed and I will abstain. I I will mention at this at this point that I've read through the minutes and I'm. And so when it comes to discussing and voting on the on the recommendations for the for the zoning initiatives, I will be able to invoke the Mullen rule, which states that because I read the minutes, I I am informed and can participate in in discussion voting on those items. So I will be doing that. And Jim, did you did you send Eric notification for your your sort of Mullins rule allowance to allow you to 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 discuss and vote on these initiatives? Jim, you might have to unmute yourself. I'll unmute you.
I don't know if he can on the phone unmute himself. You might have to unmute everybody, there you go.
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute everybody, but it's not working. Jim?
I tried, did it work?
Yeah, yep, yeah. So were you were you able to 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 get Eric the Mullen rule verification that you read the minute so you could so you could debate and and vote this evening on the initiatives?
No, I I I did not, I didn't make the meeting and I didn't feel it.
Okay.
That it was necessary, but I now I'm not sure.
Well, it just means that you can't I I don't think you can vote on the when we get to that part of the meeting. I don't think you can vote on the initiatives on the recommendations.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that. Okay. So we 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 voted on and we approved the minutes. And the first order of business is a Z B A recommendation for application of Dimitri D Demashev for property located three forty seven Well Street, assessors map one oh two lot twenty five, which is located in the G I zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections two hundred six to two hundred six point two E and two hundred eight point three of the zoning ordinance in order to allow an eight foot fence with privacy screening around land used to J S Ray L L C uses a contractor yard and open storage of raw materials, finished goods and construction equipment at this location. So this is a this is a Z B A recommendation. I think I forwarded the board some information that was that was given to to the applicant around sort of some of the permitting requirements. And we will be going looking at a general site plan review for this property at our next meeting. Just as a little bit of background, but but for now, what we're what we're talking about specifically is is the the Z B A recommendation for the special permit for the fence. So is the applicant here to to present what they would like to do? No? Okay.
Hi. I'd like to have some input on this. I don't know how much time I have available. I don't know if that's in fact something I can do.
Are you in a butter?
I certainly am.
Um, yeah, so if you could state your name and your address, we're we're happy to listen.
My name is Michael Mastrol Tataro. I live at thirty seven Cypress Street here in Greenfield, about three houses in from the corner of Well Street and Cypress Street. So I'm very close to I'm very close to all three of those properties that are. I guess they're all joined together now, but there's three twenty five Wells, which is an abandoned house that's boarded up. These all belong to Mr. Domanchev. His what he what he has is his trucking firm. And just north of that is the J S Ray business, which is a defense that's in question. And again, I don't know how much time you can allot me, but I got an awful lot to say. I could abbreviate it if I have to, but I there are some certain points I'd certainly like to make.
Okay, well, we we have a fair amount of business ahead of us tonight. I want to give you a chance to to say your piece. I think you're the only person here who's going to be speaking on this matter. The presenter isn't here, so you know, you can take five or ten minutes.
I'd probably be closer to ten. In any event, I have some like prepared some written stuff, so. You said, family and I have been residing at thirty seven Cypress Street since nineteen eighty eight, and our home is our biggest investment. However, our quality of life, along with many of the neighbors, has been slowly deteriorating due to the infiltration of certain businesses within and alongside our neighborhood. Particularly the two businesses that have set up shop at three forty seven Well Well Street. One of these businesses, J S Ray L L C, is the is the purpose of tonight's meeting. I understand that, although the owner of the property, although the owner of the properties other business, Mr. Domanchev of G F C Trucking has its own quality of life and environmental issues. I will try to limit my comments to the subject at hand, however.
Right, we're we're speaking specifically about the fence this evening.
Right, I understand that, but there's more to the fence than the the two the two zoning numbers that are attached to this appeal.
Yeah, but we're we're speaking we're we're just addressing the fence. So any specific comments you have about the fence will be helpful for this evening. I mean, there's going to be a Z B A hearing for the special permit. We're going to be conducting a site plan review for the overall project. I believe I believe next week, our November meeting. So if you could just please, I think I think for now, I limit your comments to to your concerns about the fence.
Well, there are environmental issues concerning the fence and that are directly related to the fence and indirectly related to the fence. So you can stop me whenever you want and and I think these are issues that need to be addressed, and then you guys can decide on whether or not they need to be. But I wrote Mark Snow a letter in July, July twenty eighth regarding those properties and one of those issues, one of those three issues I just mentioned was the fence. And I never heard back from him, but I did. About a month later, I was given a copy of any of the email that Mr. Snow sent to Mr. Domanchev dated August twenty first detailing many of the issues I raised. There. I'm kind of going off script here because I want to keep it short, but he gave him notice of violations without the fence, which was ordinance two hundred dash six point two E, two hundred dash six point two E, erect the fence without required permit. So this fence has already been erected, I'm sure you guys already know that, right?
Yep, yep.
The fence along the front yard exceeds, you know, they're they're just out of code. He installed the fence without a sign. And what I find interesting is that during he puts in his letter, Mark Snow puts in his letter that during the recent phone conversations, you were informed by Greenfield's owning ordinance requires site plan review for this property. And one of the issues with that is in two thousand and fourteen, an application for the site plan review was submitted to the Department of Planning. This is in two thousand and fourteen, was submitted to the to the Department of Planning and Development. The description on the application indicates to extend and improve the parking area for the trucking firm. And development states the application of site plan review had been withdrawn. Recently, while we discussed this property, I asked about the site plan, this is Mr. Snow. And the reason the application had been withdrawn, you indicated the design professional who was working with you on the site plan stopped working as a result. And the application was withdrawn. That was six years ago. And I'm sure this guy could have found a designer over the course of the last six years. That that to me is an issue, but in any event. My issue with the correspondence is that Mr. Snow wrote his letter in August twenty first. He referenced a recent phone conversation regarding the complaints, which communicates to me that Mr. Demanchev already knew he was in violation of these ordinances. And yet, Mr. Demanchev did not file his appeal until October nineteenth, maybe on the third day deadline to file. Not only that, but he and J S Ray have not shown any good faith efforts to to at least to try to address some of the complaints, my complaints, which was which are not directly related to the fence. But they're within the whole scope of what's going on over there. And anyway, so this is disconcerting to me as it shows total disregard to the concerns of their neighbors. This is important as this is a this is in contrast to the purpose of the zoned general industry district, section two hundred dash four point one one, which reads, as you guys already know, the purpose of the G I district is to provide areas for light industry and and manufacturing, which do not intrude on residential areas. Although this application references two hundred points, two hundred six point two, two hundred eight point three to allow an eight foot fence, there are several zoning ordinances that, in my opinion, have been broken that directly and indirectly relate to the installation of this fence. And let us not let us not forget this fence has already been installed, for instance. There's I can read each ordinance? Or I can just reference the number for for the record? If that's what you prefer to shorten this up a little bit? There are environmental issues here, and that is very important. And they need to be addressed, and if if you just give me the opportunity to do that, I need about another five to eight minutes and I'll get through this and.
Well, I mean, if you could if you could maybe if you could cite this this the specific zoning zoning ordinances that you
Yes.
Let me I mean, I'm I take a quick poll the rest of the board and see 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 how we feel about this. Um, George, do you have an opinion about about sort of going on here with 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 Michael in this process?
I I want to be clear about the process. I know that we're this evening making a recommendation about the special permit request for the fence, which, as noted, has already been constructed. And I don't know, you probably know, Charles, I can't remember when the Z B A meeting is when that will be decided, and there'll be further opportunity for public input. And then just this evening, you were sharing, Charles, that we're having a site plan review related to this somehow.
Yes.
The rest of us hadn't been aware of. If something specific to the fence and, sir, you alluded to environmental issues. I wonder if you could bullet point what the environmental issues are related to the fence. That's what I would be most interested in hearing, any fence related factors.
Right, without necessarily going, you don't necessarily have to go through the entire, you know, ordinance. And and again, as 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 George pointed out, there's going to be more opportunity to discuss this publicly, both with the Z B A and the site plan review.
And I'll add that the the two parts of the zoning ordinance that are cited, one is about fences per se. The other is the special permit guidelines, which include consideration of environmental issues, environmental.
Right, and those those have not been addressed, those those weren't performed. And that's a real big issue. And just let me go through this, and I'll I'll just bullet point the 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 numbers. And I won't necessarily read through them, but there's a couple I do want to read through because I want to make a point of how this is affecting our neighborhood and the quality of life that the people that live in this neighborhood, how it's affecting us.
Okay.
Okay, so two hundred six point two accessory use accessory use of structures. Letter B accessory structures, number two, accessory structures greater than or equal to one hundred and twenty square feet. So no accessory structure to be located, required front yard, et cetera, et cetera. While presently, along alongside that fence in the front, there is a a a container like a trailer that they store goods. And it's directly abutted against that fence. And not only that, there's a porta potty there. And it's aestheticly awful to the community. People live right across the street from this place. And that's something that that's certainly a negative aspect to this whole thing and that just doesn't make it, you know? And and I'd like to see that addressed, and there's all sorts of stuff. But also, there's parking requirements, which is not directly about the fence, but it certainly is indirectly. All parking area, this is two hundred six point five parking requirements, design requirements. All parking areas in the driveway shall be maintained as follows. Dust free weather surface properly drained. Well, here's that, there's a big issue there. When they put that fence in, that they're supposed to according to these ordinances do the least amount of damage to the vegetation as possible. Well, when J S Ray went in there to prepare this, there used to be a lawn, just grass field. And they scraped the entire grass field. And it's now now it's raining, it's mud. And that's an environmental issue, it's notated in one of these ordinances where that's going down our storm drains. And that's an issue. And when it's dry, I'll give you an example. The entire fenced in area was scraped of all lawn prior to the fence installation. As a result, when the dry weather, the entire area kicks up dust, so much so that a woman who lived on the corner of Place Terrace and Well Street, directly across the street from them, had to call the police and eventually had to move due to the dust entering her apartment. She had an issue with her lungs, she had to leave. This is six oh six point five D landscaping, perimeter landscaping. All parking areas, except those within the central commercial districts, shall be separated from the street line by ten foot landscape buffer strip, including shade trees. These are the these are the ordinances, and they can't be ignored. Three inch diameter, forty feet on center and shrubs at least three feet in height upon maturity. And that is supposed to be to not intrude upon our neighbors. This is good neighbor faith this with this light industry, right? And then I'm just gonna I'm just gonna go through. I'll just give you the ordinance numbers, okay? A lot of these related to environmental issues. Performance standards. The purpose, number one, number two. Section C. Standards, number two, no sound, noise, vibration, odor, flashlight, this they may it's it's crazy, man. These guys set up shop at six o'clock in the morning, they're they're breaking the the noise ordinance, they're kicking up dust. There's diesel trucks going all hours of the day and night over there. It's just just this whole thing smells funny. There there were no site plans drawn up for this, the guy had six years to do it. A fence was installed out of code. Now we're going back to approve this. It's it's just, it's not right. And when Mark Snow wrote that letter, he said he was in violation, and there were supposed to be fines given to this guy. I don't want to see anybody have to spend money they don't need to spend. But that's completely been overlooked. From what I understand, this may have changed by the time this letter was written, but neither of those businesses have filed the business permit. And the the whole thing smells a bit like Michael to me. This is still on six point eight. Number three. Generation of dust, dirt, fly ash, fumes, et cetera, okay? Number eight. Whenever existing contours of the land are altered, grading, site design and construction shall be designed to prevent soil erosion, sedimentation, uncontrolled surface water runoff. All those things are occurring. Number one, prevent topsoil from migrating off construction site. Number two, protect water systems. Those are both in violation. For A B procedure, these standards shall pertain to all building sites under new construction or redevelopment. I don't have to read it, you guys know what it is. It's on the record now.
I think at this point, Michael, I mean, we're we're going to be reviewing all these issues when when it when it when it comes through to us, and so we're familiar with the bylaw and, you know, it's it's a great heads up on your part. I appreciate.
Well, I just don't think that, I mean, I I understand that you guys can recommend or not recommend. And I mean, you guys were in place for a reason. But I sincerely believe that this this only because of the time and that the 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 time that's lapsed with this gentleman not performing the the work that he should have been doing. He's had six years, he actually started putting a site plan together. And it was not convenient for him to 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 complete that. And six years later, here we are with this mess we're in. And the neighborhood has to look at this stuff, has to smell this stuff, has to cope with the bad air, has to cope with the diesel exhaust. And the properties aren't dressed accordingly, there's no buffer zone, the noise, it's it's ridiculous. And but in any event, I just want to say that the sum of all these zoning violations is pernicious and are in conflict with the purpose of the G I, which in part is not to intrude on residential areas. For the planning board and or zoning board of appeals to ignore these violations by granting a special permit without these issues being rectified would be a disservice to the abutting residential neighborhood. Furthermore, overlooking any potential environmental concerns would be negligent and could result in the distrust of the appointed members of these boards by the community at large. And I would really like to see you guys really consider consider this before you make the decision, and I really appreciate the time and like I said, I've cut this short and because I know you have a lot to do, but this is not the way to go, this is how not how business should be run. I again, I pay taxes. I pay my property tax on time. And they they keep going up. And I'm speaking on behalf of my neighbors, and by that time the meeting rolls around on the twelfth, I will have a ton of signatures from this neighborhood to back my claims. I was not prepared for this meeting, I didn't know this had to come first before the other, so I I just found out about this yesterday, so. But
All right.
This this not should have this should not have gone the way it's going. And this is a this, you know, our taxes go up, our property tax go up. And with what's going on at the end of this street, if I wanted to sell my house, I couldn't because nobody would be interested in buying in this neighborhood. And again, I know it's it's zoned in in a general industry, but it's specifically for light industry. And when I bought my house in nineteen eighty eight, that was not the zoning.
Okay.
So I said my piece and I'll shut my mic off now.
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Move on.
Yeah, we'll we'll move along and now that so so let's discuss this sort of amongst amongst ourselves.
Oh, Charles, Jenny has a question.
Okay.
If I need to, or can you do how to unmute yourself, Jenny?
Thank you very much. I actually just had, I wanted to say also something about this. I'm the chancellor for precincts three. And I have been getting complaints. I know tonight we are just dealing about the fence, so first, thank you for letting me speak. But I have been getting complaints about this for months, day and night. Tonight, I know that you're just going to give a recommendation, one way or another, about the fence, and I totally understand. It certainly is unsightly. It is. It did not meet the setback requirements, it's eight feet on the side where the neighbors are. I agreed with Michael in totality. There the storage box should have been on the other side, the porta potty doesn't need to be there. The drainage, because they have taken off probably an acre's worth of topsoil and grass to put that in. I I know that that was in order to put the the fence and get that place ready. I think that some some extra landscaping with bushes or something needs to be put in, that would be a suggestion that I would have. But I wanted to concur with him and validate the issues that he had said. This was done. We don't ever know what anyone else's intentions truly are. That's between them and themselves, I guess. But they were aware because they tried to get a permit in another place and just didn't go into it this way. So now we will be giving a permit probably to someone who had total disregard for the permitting process. And the way it is now, unsightly, the drainage issue. the way it is now, unsightly, the drainage issues and environmental considerations that go with that. I just wanted to, to, to express my concerns too, because they have been brought to me by so many. So in the end, you're going to make the decision. I sent you photos. I sent you photos of the drainage of what was happening there. And actually, there are some of you on this board that have a much better understanding than me even about the environmental repercussions of something like this. So I'm going to allow that to the powers that be, but I felt in conscience, I wanted to back up the constituents who have been complaining and validating the issues that were stated. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ginny.
Well, it seems like, it seems like there are a lot of issues here that go beyond the fence. And fences is, is one small piece of what seems to be a much larger issue. And to sort of address it as a, as a separate item apart from everything else, it abstracts it a little bit. So I'm not quite, and I don't, I'm not quite sure where to go on it from here necessarily. Does anybody else, anybody else have any thoughts? George?
Charles, yeah, this is obviously, as you're saying, a very complicated and multifaceted situation. And there's other aspects of the situation in process right now. I don't know if there might be, if we're, since we're only talking about the fence site, I don't know if there might be some neighbors who might say, well, this place is a mess. But the fence makes it more tolerable or less unsightly or something. I don't know. I appreciate the input that we have had a chance to get. I also, if you look at the section of the zoning ordinance in question, this is an eight-foot fence all around. Section E5 says that all fences greater than six feet so any part of the fence being over six feet would require a building permit, which was not sought. And as far as the setbacks and certainly the, the front portion could only be over four feet if a special permit was sought. Clearly, it's quite concerning not adhering to the proper standards in our community. And I'm loathe to, I mean, I understand sometimes people make mistakes and overlook things, but I'm loathe to reward something that could have been avoided with some due diligence. So my thought is to perhaps send forward no recommendation on this again, because I don't know if this one small part might be seen by some neighbors. And obviously, Mr. Mastra Totoro, Taro, sorry, is going to try to mobilize other neighbors at the ZBA and they'll get a full range of input at that point. But that would be my suggestion is we forward no recommendation on this because it's so complicated and I can't see in good conscience forwarding a positive recommendation given the lack of adherence to standards by the proponents.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This is Jim.
Hey, Jim.
Okay, I'm looking, I'm looking at the picture on my computer screen of the sign. The top of the sign has got to be in excess of five feet. So it too isn't a problem. My problem with that sign is it looks like it's been reused from somewhere else. It has a Sheller Falls phone number. It has a Sheller Falls address. It's like it was, well, we'll solve all our problems just by slapping this sign up there. And I don't, for me, it doesn't do it, but.
That's the JS Ray sign, I believe.
Yeah, the red sign. Right, right. The Sheller Falls address and a Sheller Falls phone number. I can't think of what else it does say. I can't read my own writing. But it's just like an aptifon. And I really think what it's done is it has appreciated the neighborhood, the sign itself, and as well as all the fencing. And if we were to redo it to get it back within tolerances, maybe, I don't know. But I'm not happy with the way it looks right now.
Okay. Mark?
Thanks, Charles. So a newer guy, let me ask a clarifying question here because I feel like I really agreed with the majority of what George had to say regarding the fence. Not just all property, but just the business at hand this evening. I guess to me, like, it feels almost like, it feels like a bit of a hostage situation to be asked to approve something that was done incorrectly and following, like, the wrong procedure. If, if there was neighbors coming who were kind of like, we love the fence, we're really pleased with the fence, and we encourage you to give the special permit retroactively, that maybe, maybe would feel a little different. But frankly, if it's, if it's out of code and what we're hearing is it's, there's other problems, and I get the other problems don't factor in. But I feel almost backed against the wall being asked to issue a special permit for something that was done out of code, out of sync with the permitting process, and now we're supposed to say, okay. There's no way. So whereas George is saying kind of, maybe we should just not issue a recommendation, I guess I'm, is that along the lines of abstaining or are we saying no? Because I would be comfortable with a full-on no to the special permit, not kind of abstaining or making no recommendation. But I mean, I don't want to cause more problems here, but it just, I don't, how do you endorse this process? How do you endorse this fence?
Right. Jamie, did you have any thoughts?
I'm taking notes here. But yes. Yeah, I took a question mark because I don't really know if, the no recommendation, I understand it's because it's like, maybe we need more information. We don't have the whole picture. There's other stuff going on. I think that's kind of what George is getting at for a negative recommendation. You know, that's also feels appropriate based on, you know, even just the limited information we have about all the code violations and things like that. So I'm happy with either of those. I think both of them convey, again, we're not making a decision here, we're just making a recommendation.
Right.
I do think more information would be helpful, but I'm also, we gave a negative recommendation that could convey our sense of, you know, like this isn't okay for those to do. So either of those, I'm in favor of.
Okay. Yeah, I was, as I was sort of mulling this over, George, I got to the idea of the, of the no recommendation also. Just because I think the ZBA is going to be taking a lot more into consideration than, than the fence, and as are we, you know, it's site plan review. And if we, if we did, if we did decide to say, to send no recommendation, we can, I think, can add, you know, our comments to that as well. Or reasons for doing so, and then things that we think that, that are, you know, merit attention. If you, if you sort of, if you sort of pull this apart from a separate, you know, separate, as a separate issue, and say, somebody come before us for a special permit for a fence that was already built. Whoops, you know, we didn't know we needed a special permit. Can we, can we get one sort of retroactively? You know, we might be thinking about it differently. There, there is, in the, in the zoning, it does say fence requirements may be modified by the ZBA by the issuance of a special permit based upon finding that such modification is not, such modification is not detrimental to the neighborhood, nor that such modification will jeopardize vehicle and or pedestrian traffic. Now, I don't know if that means that, that they can grant any sort of dimensional waivers, that the eight-foot, that under those, under those conditions, the eight-foot fence may be acceptable by special permit. It might mean that. I'm not sure what the interpretation of that is. In which case, you know, there is a pathway through, through something to get a special, like, or fence over eight feet. But you also need a building permit for it. Sounds like.
And none of that happened. And none of that actually happened.
There's no building permit. There's no special permit.
Yeah.
They're, they're coming to the fact, asking for a special permit. A building permit. I guess you would need your special permit before you got your building permit. So this would be the first order of business.
Charles, one other consideration, could I ask again? Could you please repeat? We're having our site plan review next week. And when is the ZBA meeting on this issue?
I'm not sure when the ZBA is discussing this.
Eric mentioned it in his email last week. I just don't have it. I can't pull it up very easy. I think he said the 12th or something. Oh, I think Michael might have, or Mastra Totaro.
Michael works. Michael works.
Can someone mute Jim, please?
Sorry?
Charles, can you mute Jim? Oh, thank you.
I believe that meeting is the 12th.
Okay.
I was told that the site plan review was scheduled for the 19th, but sometimes Eric forgets to follow up on stuff. And so I don't know if that is the case. If it's next week, I would think that there would be a site visit before the review is is performed, right? I mean, isn't that generally the case?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I can't remember whether it's, whether it's the 5th or the 19th. But it's, it should, the agenda should be posted.
The reason I was asking that, Charles, is whether or not our meeting about the site plan review would happen prior to the ZBA meeting, which could inform their perspective on it. But it sounds like we don't have that information right now. We don't know what order that'll be in. Thanks.
Can I just say one more thing, if you don't mind? If you get the chance, if any of you people on the board get the chance, take a drive by that property. You will see all sorts of things at play there. And I think the big picture kind of tells it all. And put yourself in the shoes of those who live directly across the street and within earshot of of those, those properties. Yeah, one of, one of the the ordinances, noise ordinance about, about, if you can hear the noise from beyond 450 feet, they're doing something wrong. And that's certainly the case.
Right.
I appreciate you letting me chime in. I'll shut my mic off.
Thank you.
And I'll just, I'll just inform you, sir, that part of our responsibility is to visit each site and to consider all perspectives, including abutters and neighbors. So just let you know that.
So I do have the calendar up on the town. I don't know if it's but it does seem to indicate our meeting on the 5th is canceled.
Okay.
That ZBA meeting is on the 12th. And I don't see our meeting on the 19th for some reason. That's just what I can see up there on the website.
All right. So as, as, thanks, Jamie. So just, just a sort of like, if you, it's a hypothetical situation. You know, suppose we forward a negative recommendation to the ZBA. The ZBA doesn't, doesn't grant them a special permit for the set, for the fence. And then Mark Snow says, okay, you gotta tear the fence down. And so now you've got that whole yard there with no fence. Would that be, would that be a preferable situation?
Charles, I wouldn't say that that would be a preferable situation, but I guess that's exactly why I'm saying I feel like this is a hostage situation, and I just don't care for it. I, I if a neutral recommendation makes more kind of strategic sense, I'm certainly not going to try to obstruct that. But I guess, you know, I would want to be reasonable as well. And if we were talking something that was purely residential and oops, somebody's fence was a couple inches over and their neighbor was fine with it. And we said, well, then retroactively, let's just approve this and let that be what it is. That feels like one thing, but like, so who is this property owner in this general industry land? I mean, it's, I don't feel like this is the honest mistake of like a resident who's just kind of doing things around their home and their yard. Is there a little bit more of a burden to be on top of this stuff if you're a developer? Is that what this would be? Like kind of real estate development? And does that create more obligation to know the appropriate channels and procedures and to follow them? Because I just feel backed up against a wall in a way that I don't care for. And I question the message that it sends to do a lot of retroactive, yeah, sure. You know, if it makes more sense to just do no recommendation, of course, I would follow that. But I, I'm not loving this. It feels inappropriate to ask us to approve this, you know?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a fun situation. It's not a fun situation to be in. Having to sort of weigh in on something like this. And, and, and you just think about, well, you know, he, I mean, I guess the fence, you know, it shields the neighbors from everything that's going on there in the lot. It's also, you know, it also provides security for them, for their equipment to park back there. So it's serving both them and the public. And, and it would, and it would seem that if, that if, that if they were in accordance with all other aspects of being, you know, a good general industry neighbor, that we would not necessarily have a problem with the fence. And the neighbors might not either, I suspect. But, but that's not, that's not the situation right now. And the fence is part of a larger discussion.
And our negatives, you know, if we did a negative recommendation, I mean, that wouldn't result necessarily in the fence having to get pulled down. It's just expressing, if we've all felt that way, or a majority of us felt that way, to make the negative recommendation. It doesn't. You know, him not getting the special permit, I don't know how that works. I don't know if the town would require, I don't know how it works, but
Yeah.
It's just a recommendation. We don't have the power here.
Right. And in some ways, this is, this is like a little, it's a little backwards. I feel like we should be having this site plan review conversation before the fence conversation. And, and so we have all the information before us. And so that it could be, they could even be coupled together. I don't know if it's possible to, to do that or not. But, you know, if we, if, you know, you know, assuming that, you know, that, let's give the applicant the benefit of the doubt, and they're going to have a site plan hearing, we're going to be able to bring up all these issues for the, for the site plan review permit. And then, and then they're going to have to, you know, make the changes on site to be good neighbors. And then in that case, we would grant them the special permit most likely for the eight-foot fence. But the eight-foot fence is already there. And so, and so it is a hostage situation, but maybe it could be negotiated for a good outcome with everybody, or maybe it could be contingent upon, you know, site plan approval. George?
Yeah, Charles, I think I, I will make a motion to send no recommendation with, because I don't want to, certainly, as I said, don't want to reward conduct that was irresponsible. But I don't want to necessarily punish it in this way if ultimately that would be the better situation for all involved, including neighbors. And so I would say, I would say send no recommendation with the comment or comments that it's a, it's too complicated a situation. There are too many factors that are unclear. Concern about the lack of timely seeking of permit and approval. That would be my motion.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion?
I would just like to commend you guys on how reasonable you are. I don't know that this is quite the way I would go. You're being very balanced and neutral. So kudos to you. And I will strive to be a little less reactive. And I will strive to be a little less reactive about it, right?
Yeah.
Appreciate your energy on our board, Mark.
No, it's good. Yeah. It's good. I I appreciate it too and 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 I I see both sides of the fence, obviously. I'm on the fence about this thing, but, um, uh, I I I think I think that's good and I and I think that, you know, the ZBA, you know, we're we're, well, 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 but they they may may, they may may, they may or may not have the benefit of our site plan view discussion. But but there will be an opportunity, uh, for you, Michael, to address the ZBA for the special permit on the sign and also to come back to the planning board. And when we are issuing the site plan review, which is which is the real, which is the real permit, you know, that they need to continue their business there. So um, the the fence is usually just the beginning. George?
Yeah, if I could, um, with your, um, indulgence in my, uh, motion, the third thing I would add is for the ZBA to consider whether it would want to delay this until these other site plan issues are addressed.
I think that's an excellent idea.
You okay, Jamie? You seconded, right?
Yep, I'm happy with that friendly amendment. Um, I do want to, um, before we go into the final vote, I want to make sure I captured what you said, George. Um, so you forwarded, um, no recommendation to the ZBA. Let I'll not repeat all the text in there. Um, but the rationale you gave was around, and it's here in the notes as well, but, um, you know, just like the complexity, too many too many factors, um, uh, concern about, uh, untimely seeking of the permanent approval. And then the last thing you said was consider delaying, um, their votes until the other, um, site plan issues have been addressed.
Until the, yeah, until the planning board has its site plan review meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
Michael, I see you waving your hand. We're about to vote.
All right. My my only concern is, um, that the site plan review, it's been six years. And if it's delayed again for for some reason or another, you know, this this is good. I just don't want this to be an endless thing and I'm, uh, uh, no matter what the outcome, I'm hoping that I can count on you guys to ensure that this is, uh, you know, done in, uh, you know, expedited way, you know, um.
Understood. Yes.
Maybe somebody needs a push, you know?
Uh, we'll, we'll have our meeting as scheduled and and we won't we won't procrastinate and hopefully WebEx will work and we'll be able to do anything you schedule.
I'm not suggesting it's you guys at all. It isn't. It's not. It's like this.
Okay, so we're going to continue on with our vote.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so we have a motion that's been seconded. We discussed it. We've, 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 uh, edited it on favor of sending no recommendation.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You gotta unmute Jim to get his eye.
Well, thanks. Jim?
Still muted.
Jim? Rats.
Can he? Yep.
All right. Jim, what is your vote? Thank you.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Right. Good. Thank you so much, Jim. All right, so we are sending no recommendation. Um, the ZBA with the with those following, um, comments and notes. Okay. The, uh, the next item of business on the agenda are, um, the action items, planning board deliberation on the proposed amendment to section 206.1 for non-conforming uses, um, in the zoning ordinance. The, uh, the explanation for this proposed amendment is as drafted by by Eric, uh, is that a legal opinion was obtained from legal counsel on whether the existing language other causes includes non-maintained and or dilapidated buildings. The answer was no, it only includes restoration or reconstruction due to fire explosion or other natural causes as written. The purpose of this amendment is to provide clarity and allow property owners to remove existing uh, legal non-conforming buildings that are in a state of uh, to renovate existing legal non-conforming buildings that are in a state of disrepair and dilapidated. So, you know, essentially, if, you know, if if there's an old house or or a building, it doesn't conform dimensionally to a lot, the lots too small or it's encroaching on a setback line. Um, but the building is functionally is is, you know, not usable. It can be repaired, you know, in a, uh, in its non-conforming state and and brought back to life. Um, with the, uh, so it it basically, it's it's it's, um, it allows us to sort of make that exception, um, for non-conforming uses. Um, so any any discussion from members of the board on this or or actually, I guess I should say, any comments from the public on this? Okay, George?
Well, uh, for process, my understanding is this is that the language we proposed is coming back to us for deliberation after having gone through the public hearing process. Is that, that's accurate, right?
Yeah, that's right. And so we are, so we are, um, voting on our recommendation to send to the city council for this, but for the next three ordinances.
Good.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that, George. Sometimes I just charge ahead. Thank you.
You're doing great, Charles. I feel like on this one, people seem, didn't seem to have any issues with this one.
Right, right.
This was the easy one.
Right. No, I think and I think it's, you know, I think it's great. It allows people to, you know, to to restore, you know, properties that may be, you know, can normally under under state of being condemned and there's nothing you can do because it's not, because it's not conforming, you know, not conforming use. Um, and this just brings it, you know, allows people to update their properties and but I think it's pretty, I think it's a good, a good move. Anybody sending this, George?
Well, I would just, since there was no public input, um, to, uh, suggest, uh, reconsidering the wording of this, I would make a motion to forward this, uh, ahead to the city council.
A second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of sending a positive recommendation to the city council on this ordinance?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Jim, did you get to vote?
I'd like to add abstain.
Oh.
Okay, Jamie.
Isn't this one of the ones he can't vote on because he wasn't?
Oh, that's right, Jim. I'm sorry. You can't vote on these. Thanks for the reminder.
Good, then I would, that makes me happy because I really don't want to vote on them.
All right, so that's, that one's done. So the the next one is the, uh, proposed zoning amendment, um, to close this, um, uh,
The condo loophole?
The condominium loophole, so that a developer, a developer can't come in and then help a homeowner, you know, build an ADU and then have owner, the developer have ownership of that property by virtue of the fact that they built it and then and then rent it out to somebody who's not, who's who's a non-owner. So essentially what this says is that if somebody builds an ADU on their property, you know, that's fine. But it it and it can be condominiumized and it can be sold. But but it has to be owner occupied. So it just, it I guess it limits the possibility of ADUs becoming sort of rental units for for non-res, for for non, non-homeowner, um, folks. So it's, they're they're always going to be owner occupied. Um, North Hampton has a similar a similar, uh, uh, ordinance, um, saying essentially this. And I think this is, uh, I think this will help. Um, I'm I'm hoping this will help, um, assuage some concerns that folks may have. And George?
I'm monitoring the chat and a couple of people have said they want to comment on the ADU, but I don't know if it's, since we have two ADU, um, components, I don't know if it's on this one or the the next one.
Um, okay, so who's? Who who?
Sandy and Al, I believe.
Sandy, would you like to?
Al and then Sandy wrote in here.
Um, okay, okay. Do you want to talk about the loophole one specifically or or to the or the detached ADU question?
You're still on mute, Sandy. I think you mouthed detached.
My un, my unmute all button's not working. I think you can unmute yourself, Sandy.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you well.
Okay. Sandy.
Yeah, um, I wanted to speak about the detached ADU.
Okay. All right.
I have a brief comment, Mr. Chairman, on the, on the condo.
Sure thing.
Um, the I attended an online seminar about ADUs and, uh, regarding, it was put on by a who, uh, oh, quite aware and quite, uh, um, anxious to, uh, to get into Greenfield and, uh, convince elderly people that this is a good place to put a hundred grand. One of the things that that he said was um, suggested, uh, was that condominiums, uh, could be formed by having the landowner, the property owner, uh, take their backyard ADU and convert it into a condo, make their own home a condo and then create a two-person, two-house condo association. I wanted to fall through my chair. Um, this is the most twisted, uh, way of 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 creating a two condo association. And, um, dubbing dovetailing into the state's condominium law that has all kinds of nooks and corners that are that are horrendous, like 65-year, you know, leases. Um, I mean, it it just, it was awful. And I, I think most people in Greenfield uh, understand that it's one thing to have a condominium association of 10, 15, 20 units. But to have a homeowner and their their backyard ADU become a condo and the ramifications that has for the the neighbors and other properties is just awful. So I don't know. I frankly don't know if this language solves the problem. Uh, I'd like to know that a attorney had reviewed it. But, uh, I can tell you that I was the condo language that was submitted, uh, albeit not, it may not be perfect, but it's better than what was presented after hearing this developer's presentation. It was quite clear that this loophole needs to be closed firmly. Thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, um, as far as I know, we 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 can't legally tell a homeowner that they can't submit, that they can't create a condominium out of, out of, out of their property, but we can, we can limit, um, how people, you know, how how, we can't limit the fact that it has to be owner occupied. So I think, I I think it, I think it maintains the spirit of of the detached ADU and 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 in in that, in that it it creates owner occupied housing. It, you know, may or may not be affordable depending on where it's built and how much it costs, but but it's 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 owner occupied housing.
Right, and I and I strongly support that, uh, that sentiment. Uh, you will recall that roughly a year ago, uh, the first version of this ADU uh, redraft that was, um, that was presented by several counselors. You will recall that the first version eliminated owner occupied, which was probably the most egregious uh, change that I've ever seen in an ADU ordinance. This condo is is less impactful than changing the, uh, asking for the, uh, the city to accept a no owner occupancy requirement. Fortunately, uh, uh, by the time this reached the council in May, that 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 proposal had been dropped. Uh, but, uh, as I say, I I support the language, uh, if this does the job of preventing two-person, two-unit, uh, two, two, uh, two-house condominium associations, I'm all for it.
Okay. Um, any any other comments from the board?
Al, what's your street address?
21 Grinnell Street.
Thank you.
Sure.
George?
I would make a motion to forward a positive recommendation on this to the city council.
I will second that.
Any further discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Extentions?
I'm gonna extend it, extend again and whatever.
Yeah.
If I can.
You, yeah, you, uh, again, I don't think you can vote, um.
Okay, good.
George. I mean, all right, so now now comes the, uh, uh, the the amendment, um, requiring uh, attached accessory dwelling units um, to be by special permit only. Um, I have a, I have a lot of input, a lot of emails from the public, which I told people dutifully that would read into the record, so it's going to take a while. But but two, two, two correspondents are here with us this evening. And if they would like to, um, speak, um, in person, it will save me having to read your emails and give you the opportunity to to speak publicly. So welcome your, your the board welcomes your, your, uh, your comments. Sandy?
Sure. Um, so you can read mine separately if you wish. I, uh, it's basically what I said the last time at the joint meeting. But I think, um, for one, I want to say I have a new appreciation for the work that you all do to protect neighbors. Um, I knew that you did, but hearing Mr. Mastratotaro and his, um, horrible situation, it makes me even more convinced that um, and and feel strongly about having a special permit for detached ADU. Um, I I just, I'm perplexed as to why the council would feel so adamant about denying the right of a neighbor to know what's going on on the property next door to them. And as we just heard from, um, from the gentleman that spoke, a lot can happen without a special permit. Um, I just think it gives the opportunity to be amicable and to be neighborly and to have some input perhaps on what, uh, that neighbor is proposing to do that would have a much better outcome. And I see no reason. I just don't see any rationale whatsoever to not require a special permit for detached ADU. So thanks very much.
Hey, thank you, Sandy.
Mm-hmm. Sandy, what's your street address? Sorry.
38, yeah, 38 Orchard. Thanks.
Thank you. If everyone could just say that for me, that would be great.
Yeah.
Al?
Yes, uh, thank uh, Mr. Chairman and members. I, um, to the, and Mr. Chairman, I hope that everyone has an opportunity to see that and you can read it on your own. I'm not going to read it. I, uh,
Uh-oh.
Yep.
We're losing you, Al. I think you're coming, you're coming in spotty.
Yeah, we can't really hear you, Al. It was super spotty. Uh, maybe. Yeah, you've got a little spinning wheel over your face.
Sometimes if you, if you, um, if you turn off the video feed, you'll get better bandwidth for your your vocal.
And, um, you're on mute as well, Al.
Turned out the wrong one.
It's just so frustrating.
It's okay. We hear you now. There you go. That looks and sounds good. Oh, you just muted yourself again. Hey, Al, I I'm gonna unmute. Okay.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Okay, let me ask you, um, tell me when you, when you can't hear me, please let me know. Can you, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so let me try again. Um, I have no objection at all to internal or attached ADUs. Uh, detached ADUs have the greatest impact on neighbors and the neighborhood character. But this isn't really between detached ADUs or special permits. Most allow attached ADUs like our neighbors in Montague and Deerfield also do it by special permit, which allows neighbors to have their legal appeal rights under a special permit. Um, does not mean that detached ADUs Um, does not mean that detached ADUs can't be permitted. If a neighbor wants to appeal, it's gonna cost them time and money, so they have to be pretty upset to appeal. Special permits encourage property owners to talk to their neighbors and see what their concerns are during the proposal stage. There's no justification to trample on a neighbor's rights in order to push through an ADU that has a butters concern. Building a second home on a lot that for decades may have had only one home is a big change, one which can have an impact on the neighbor's property values. As-of-right zoning silences neighbors and undermines the purpose of zoning to balance competing interests. Good zoning makes good neighbors. I urge the board to not only vote to restore this special permit as protected under Chapter Forty-Eight of the General Laws, but to go, actually go to the council meeting on November eighteenth. Because you remember last May, the council pushed this through. There was no representative from the planning board, uh, at the meeting to state the opinion um, of the, of the board. So I want to encourage you, uh, to do that and to forcefully speak for the right to neighbors to be part of the equation here. Um, protect the rights of neighbors in the zoning process. That does not make a negative statement about, about attached ADUs. It makes a positive statement about why we have zoning in the first place to balance competing interests. You just heard earlier this evening an example of why you, you need to be able to balance the interests of neighbors and abutters. So I hope you will be consistent, uh, with your, with your vote, uh, uh, last, uh, May fifteenth. And I hope you, and I hope you, uh, you know, did a little advocacy with the council. Because I, frankly, I sat through every hearing and I have heard very little support for as-of-right zoning. Most, most people in Greenfield don't even know what that means. At, at, at the EDU Planning Board Hearing, there was one letter, one letter submitted in support of as-of-right along with the comments of one counselor. But from the public, from the non-council members, one person submitted a letter, they didn't attend. We had ten people and a petition with fifty names on it of people who are concerned enough about neighbors' rights being protected and balanced in the process of making determinations about these kinds of impactful projects. We're not talking about a farm stand here, we're talking about second home on a one-home lot. Those rights should be balanced and protected, and I hope you'll do so aggressively because I think the council doesn't really understand fully that, uh, the impact of the decision that they made last, uh, May twentieth. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Al. Um, you, you, you sent me an email, Al, about, about a compromise that you were, you were you sort of were floating, which, which was the idea of allowing existing detached structures to be subject to site plan review unless their square footage is increased above twenty-five percent.
Right.
That means if I got, if I've got a five-hundred-square-foot garage and I want to turn it into an ADU, as long as I don't go over seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, or no, a quarter of that, six-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet, that would be a, um, that would be site plan review. Is that your, your, your suggestion?
Yeah, let me explain, uh, I don't know if members saw the language that I sent you, but the reason that I proposed this language, um, uh, in good faith was because one of my neighbors, the, the one person who commented from the, the, uh, the EDU, uh, Planning Board Hearing was one of my neighbors. And I, I thought he made a reasonable point. He said, look, I have, I have a garage. It's, and I've been, I've been living where I'm living for, uh, about, um, uh, since seventy-eight, so I've been here about forty-some years. Um, the folks that lived in the house prior to them, when I moved in there forty years ago, there was a garage there. Um, and the, the point that he made was why, why should I, if I have, already have a detached structure on my property, um, why should I have to go through a special permit to use it for, uh, um, an ADU? Well, I mean, I could argue that, talk to your neighbors anyway, because all the special, if, if the special, let, let me put it this way, if, if ADUs are so positive in one why would a neighbor be concerned about, uh, uh, why, why would a property owner be concerned about what their neighbors are gonna do? Obviously, the only time neighbors get agitated is when something really upsets them and they feel intruded upon. We had a case like that in Greenfield already with one of our three ADUs that was approved. Neighbor got very upset, upset and had to spend a lot of money to appeal. Um, but this neighbor of mine who said, what about my garage? I, I felt like, I don't really care whether he develops what's inside the garage, whether it's a, 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 a small family or whether it's two cars, uh, one car, whatever. I, it really doesn't affect me that much as a neighbor, and I was willing to see as a compromise that already existing a garage across the street from me, I have someone that has a, um, a carriage house. It's a lovely carriage house. I've often thought it would be a kind of a charming apartment. Unfortunately, the carriage house needs a lot of work, but it would not concern me that much to, to see existing structures like that used in a detached ADU way without a special permit. But if they, if they want to make a substantially new building by adding to it or, or, um, uh, that, that's why I put the, the addition of twenty-five percent, then I think all the neighbors around them who have relied on, for thirty or forty years on the fact that there's X amount of people living on that lot and, and there is no, there's no other, uh, you know, building, that's when you start to get into the, the, the need, I think, for balancing, uh, the, the needs of, of neighbors with the property, uh, being proposed. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be, uh, you know, uh, put a compromise language that would, um, appeal to people like my neighbor who says, I already have a garage or I already have a carriage house. What's the big deal? I don't think it's a big deal. I think new construction or substantially altered new construction is what we're talking about. None of us have said anything about existing. None of us have said anything about interior. It's just detached. And, you know, that's why towns like Montague and Deerfield just absolutely do not allow detached units without special permits. So that's my compromise, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Norman. Um, George?
Just to clarify process, Charles, I appreciate the, the thoughtfulness and creativity of that, what label is a compromise. But that's the kind of thing, since that was not something submitted to, um, the process and didn't go through the public hearing, that's not something we could endorse, uh, this evening. Is that correct?
Well, I think, I think that it's, um, that, that, because it, it seemed to me, because it was, it was, it was submitted in good faith and it actually, it's, it's, it's rolling back sort of the requirements as opposed to tightening them, that maybe we could consider it. Um, I, 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 I think the ADU bylaw is complicated enough already as it is and, or, or it's not that complicated, but people, you know, it's a lot for people to sort of wrap their heads around, I think, sometimes. And I, I would be inclined not to, not, not to give that allowance anyway, and because I think neighbors still might want to be able to comment on the fact that there's gonna be more cars there, there's gonna be people living next door. And even if it's a ten percent addition, it's still construction going on next door. So I would, I, 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 I think I would, I, I, I would be inclined not, n- not to grant that sort of relaxation anyway.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify process without expressing an opinion. Thanks.
Okay, I express my opinion, so. Eric? Did you, did you raise your hand?
Oh, yeah, thanks, Charles. I, I just wanted to agree with you. I don't, I don't feel the need to compromise on this. I think requiring a special permit for detached units is eminently reasonable, and I fully support it. But I actually kind of forgot that you maybe had some additional stuff that you wanted to be reading in. Kind of thought that we were not coming into deliberation.
I've got a pile, I've got a pile of emails here, and I promised people I'd read them, but, but I'm, I, and Alz, your, your email's very long, but if, if you're okay with mine not reading it because you got a chance to weigh in in, in public, are you okay with that?
Oh, absolutely, and I just would encourage members at some point. Yeah, I don't want you to read the whole thing, no.
Okay, well, I'll just.
Charles, can I just ask a procedural? Can I just ask a quick procedural question? I would, I
Pardon?
It's very sweet that you offered to read everybody's, um, emails into the record. Normally, wouldn't that be read like during a public hearing and not during our deliberation? Because we all have access to this and it's part of the record, like Eric will staple it in the file or something. I'm just trying to save your throat and we've all read it. Um.
Have you, have you, have you had a chance to read? A lot of these emails were, did I, okay, well.
Ones that didn't get sent to us, but.
Is, is this since the joint hearing? Are, I mean, are these emails above and beyond everything that we received up to the joint hearing? This is new, newer communications?
There, there, there are emails that I received, um, after the public hearing.
There was a good advocacy effort around this, so there was a, a lot of, uh, input, which is great. Um, I'm just trying to figure out if to read them all.
Well.
It's lovely. Either way is fine with me. Um, but.
Um.
Al, you have a thought there?
Now's, now's when you need a strong decisive leader, and I'm gonna decide, Al.
I just, I just want to say that on behalf of, of, of the petitioners, I don't think that the petitioners feel that you need to read all of these things. Reading into the record is a term meaning that it'll be in the record. I, I, I would like to think that members of the board had the opportunity to, to read some of these things. Some of them may not have seen them. Um, that, that's the only concern I have, but I don't think any of us wants to listen to you read through all these uh, emails, but you might want to record how many you, you received.
Alright, well, well, thank you for that. Thank you for that, Al. I think, I think I'm gonna spare everybody then, but I will say, I, I will say that I received, George, did you, will you?
Well, just if you could read off the names so that I can double-check against my list and make sure.
Yep. So I, I, I have an, an email from, from Al Norman, dated ten-twenty-one. Um, I have an email from, uh, Margot Jones, twenty-eight Chestnut Hill, um, a, a, a speaking testimony against, um, uh, 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 in favor of requiring the special permit that was sent today, ten-twenty-nine. I have an, uh, another email from Andy Rothschild, thirty-two Lily, Lily and Court, also supporting the initiative. Barbara Levy, Grinnell Street, thirty-eight, also in support of the initiative. Diana Roberts, sixty-three Newland Pond Road, in support of the initiative. Lily Ballard, nine-twenty-seven Berniston Road, in support of the initiative. Sandy Thomas, thirty-eight Orchard Street, in support of the initiative. Steve Finer, thirty-eight Grinnell Street, in support. Tom Tolag, twelve Royal Nut Street, and Wesley Blix, the thirty-nine Orchard Street. So all those, all those emails, uh, were in favor of, of, of reinstating the special permit for the ADU ordinance. And I didn't receive anybody, any emails um, opposed to it, or in support of maintaining, uh, maintaining a by right, um, procedure. So, um, we, does, would the board like to discuss the, uh, matter at hand? George?
Thanks, Charles. Um, given this a lot of, uh, consideration and heard a lot of input from the public, um, and I'll, I'll state kind of my position and then a suggestion of our action. Um, uh, home, where we live is at the heart or the core of our quality of life. Um, and we need to balance the abstract concept of housing density with mechanisms to protect unintended negative impact on the quality of life if they are available. If it is avoidable, rather, excuse me. Um, and I strongly felt and continue to feel that attached ADU should require a special permit. Um, it's not necessarily would result in denial of that, um, proposal, uh, and it's not literally not in my backyard. It could result in thoughtful adjustment for more sustainable dense housing development. Um, and furthermore, I haven't heard a clearly compelling argument why we would remove the special permit. I just haven't, I've heard no public, um, uh, outcry for removing it, uh, or for the need to have it be as, uh, by right. And I hadn't from, uh, the deliberation I heard at the, um, EDC, uh, um, deliberation after the, uh, public hearing. I didn't hear a compelling argument, uh, for that position. So what, and um, I think to emphasize that the special permit is the issue, um, in looking at the, um, initiative, I would, um, not want to support the, uh, the minimum point seven-five of an acre component. I would also not want to support that the special permit had to be reviewed by the planning board specifically. Uh, I don't know what alternative. I don't care if it's the planning board or the ZBA. I don't want to be provincial about it. I just think it's just so essential to be a special permit process. So that's, I'm not sure how that would um, play out as far as an actual motion or what, what our options are, but I just wanted to lay out that perspective.
Thanks, George. Yes, that's right. I should have pointed, I, I meant to point out that there are actually three components to this proposal. One, is it the special permits maintained? One is that they have to be on pieces of property, three-quarters of an acre or larger, and the, and the third provision being that the planning board becomes the, uh, special permit granting authority. Um. So, um, anyone else? Um, I guess I would say, um, you're seeing no one else raise their hand, that, um, I'll jump into the breach. Uh, I think that, you know, I, so I, I just, I look at communities, it's surrounding communities and, uh, you know, N- North Hampton, Montague, East Hampton, um, and Deerfield apparently all, all require, um, you know, detached ADUs to be by special permit. Um, and, and I think in terms of consistency, we forwarded, uh, a recommendation to the City Council, um, several months ago, um, that, 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 you know, that the detached ADUs may be maintained, maintain special permit requirements. And so I think, you know, and we're the same board and, and nothing, you know, nothing has really changed and I would, I would, I would, I, I think I would want, personally myself, just maintain consistency in our, in our recommendations and, and and, um, stick to our reasoning for why we wanted it to be a special permit. I'm, I'm really, I, I'm in favor of ADUs philosophically. Um, I think, I think they're a great opportunity for people to, uh, to create, uh, you know, um, development opportunities on their properties, wealth of income, places for their, you know, their, their, their in-laws and, and extended family to live and stay and, and build community. I think, I think that's all really great. Um, I, I still think, I, the, the, I, I also think that they're, they're sort of like an opportunity of privilege. I think, I think that, I think that, um, they're not inexpensive to build and you, they're, they're not gonna be moneymakers. What they're gonna be is, is a, is a quality of life enhancer, I think, in a lot of ways for people to be able to maintain sort of like family, community, friendship, purity. And I, and I, and I, and, and they, and they, as such, they're, they're, they are a privilege and, and going into predominantly tight neighborhoods in Greenfield, and I think that the, and I, and I think that, um, that, that having, giving neighbors the opportunity kind of weigh in and make projects as, as positive and as possible within a neighborhood, um, is, is, is a great opportunity. And so, uh, I support the special. I would, I would, I would be inclined to, to, for a positive recommendation.
What are your thoughts on the, um, third of an acre for larger language?
Yes. Um, anybody else want to weigh in on that? Al?
Uh, briefly, since I, I didn't discuss it, um, uh, that language was there to, to, uh, remind, uh, the board and the EDC that there is no minimum lot size uh, other than the general minimum lot size for a, a property in Greenfield to have an ADU. Um, I've, um, I live in a neighborhood that, uh, there will be no, uh, there will be no ADUs around me. Um, so this is not, this has nothing to do with, you know, in the, in my backyard syndrome, which, uh, some of my uh, detractors like to say I'm, uh, uh, the, the NIMBY, uh, the NIMBY king, because I didn't want a Walmart. I, the Walmart would never have been in my background, uh, backyard. There's no ADU here either. I, I live next to a group home on one side and three multifamily units. My, my property is about three tenths of an acre. For me to even be considering an ADU from my perspective is is a punch in the face to my neighbors because there's just, you know, I could probably pull it off in terms of open space, but none of my neighbors really have enough room except one of the properties near me. But they, they're the ones that have a big carriage house. So I, I, I wanted to point out that there is no minimum lot size for an ADU. It does bother me because if somebody has six or seven acres, three acres, four acres, they've got, actually got plenty of room to put up an ADU. And as long as it was close to the principal home, it probably wouldn't upset the neighbors. And if they had a special permit, the first thing they could do is call up their neighbors and ask them, would you be concerned if I did such and such? Would you come and support me? That's why this whole argument about special permits is so hollow. I'm not, I'm not weighted to the point seven five. It could be point five, it could be an acre. But I do think somewhere in the ordinance, it would be helpful to say that certain small parcels that would become all basically so much house and open space that it would be a problem. But I have no, no strong interest in insisting that there be point seven five. But I wanted, I wanted members to think about the fact that there is no minimum.
Okay. I mean, I would, I guess I would say in response, I understand your points, but that, I think, I think that would rule out a majority of the lots in Greenfield or quite a large number of them. And I also think the special permit process is where you have the opportunity to, to, to look at some of the, some of the tighter adjacency issues that you might be concerned with and thinking about. So, I mean, I guess, I guess I would trust, trust the special permit process to, 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 to work those issues out. Well, just. George?
Yeah, I just, I just want to add in from a strategic point of view. We know what the full council voted a number of months ago, know what the EDC recommended recently. I, I would, I think the core issue is putting back the special permit. And I would rather not be distracted or have the council distracted by a size, lot size minimum or by who the special permit granting authority would be. That's why I suggested we purely focus in our recommendation on the need a special permit.
Support that, George. I agree with you.
Mark? Thanks, Charles. I'm in agreement in terms of the minimum acreage, but just want to jump back to the notion of if not the planning board, then who? Does it really simplify the passage of this if that's then wide open and that question is on the table? I feel like it would be more clear to move this along with the council. I mean, isn't this the exact role of the planning board to do special permit review on this kind of stuff? In the absence of a better idea of who would be that permit granting authority, I would want to see that in the ordinance moving forward.
Yeah, so a couple of things about that. So I know North Hampton is a special permit granting authority for detached ADUs. And according to Eric, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission encourages communities to to have planning boards do most of the special permit reviews. Greenfield's about half and half in terms of special permits. ZBA does about half, the planning board does about half. I think that, you know, I, I think, I think that the, the planning board drafted the ordinance. And, and, and I think we're really well equipped to deal with the issues. And I would, I actually would like, I, I would like the planning board to maintain, you know, to, to have the special permit granting authority for this. So I would, I would tend to forward a lot of positive recommendation for that aspect. George?
Just a little historical context that with the ADU ordinance, who the special permit granting authority has been, has been a bit of a political hot potato. And that's why I'm mentioning, it originally was the planning board, then it went to the ZBA. It was suggested to come back to the planning board. I, I just want to not dilute that the issue is let's have a special permit. It's not essential which of the two boards it is. That's, that's just my perspective. I don't want that to be a distraction for the council. I'll, I'll stop talking about it in there.
It's to keep it simple. Less is more philosophy. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree. Do you think it's still as hot button of an issue as it was? There are some different makeup of the council. Because I agree. I mean, I think the special, the special permit is the more important thing than the lot size minimum or who's the SPGA. But I agree too, like I would like it to come back to the planning board. It just always made sense. It was our ordinance. It got taken away and I think we are well equipped to handle it. So I would like to see it come back personally, but yeah, I want to, you know, pick our battles here. I don't have any further insight. I don't know if anyone else on, on the board or in the audience does, but I agree for the need to be a little strategic.
Yeah. I mean, the city council has, has, has the ability to be discerning and parse the differences. And, and I do think that, I do think it's important for, 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 for one of us to be at the city council meeting on the 18th to, to present our, our thought and our reasoning in person on this, and that would be an opportunity to, to, to sort of address that specifically. I guess I can go either way. So whoever makes the motion on this one will probably rule the day.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion.
I knew you, I knew you would, George.
To forward a positive recommendation about returning the detached accessory dwelling unit to a special permit review process. As well as a preference for the planning board being the special permit granting authority.
Frankly nuanced.
But a, and I'm not sure as far as the structure of this, so I don't know if we would have needed Eric for this, but but a negative recommendation about the minimum lot size. Again, I'm not sure how we frame that technically. But that's the essence of my motion.
Any further discussion? Jamie, I think you're muted.
Okay, who did the second?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Charles, are you frozen there? I can't tell.
No, I don't know. For some reason, I was waiting for Jamie to say she was done.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, you know, this is a lot late at night.
So we moved, we discussed.
Yeah, so I, I do have a question because it isn't in the vote language that's in my document. It's not broken out into those three things, just as positive or negative. I can just summarize what George said very eloquently. I have it written down. But it's not a straightforward, like, are they a package? Sometimes we get things that's like a package and you can't break it apart, and sometimes you can.
I think we can tease this apart. I think we can say we're going to forward a positive recommendation to, to, to reinstate the special permit. A preference for the planning board, it'd be the special permit granting authority, and a negative recommendation on the lot size, minimum lot size. Assuming that's what we, everybody agrees that that was what we.
That was my vote.
Well, George's languaging was like a preference for, which isn't really a vote language. So I just want to get clarity. Are we making a positive recommendation on the planning board being the special permitting granting authority?
Sure, I guess. George, what's your intention?
Again, I don't know how restricted we are by the procedural considerations, but I would like to forward it as best we can, as I stated it. And Eric might come back and slap our wrist, but he's not here right now.
Right.
All right.
I, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a good faith recommendation.
Okay. All right, so we have positives for the special permit review process, preference for us to be SPGA, and negative for minimum lot size. That's what's on the table.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, any further discussion now that we've had that clarified language? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
That's all of us. That's all four of us.
Decisions. Okay, so we are, we are forwarding the recommendations as outlined in George's motion for the special permit for the detached accessory dwelling units. Okay, thank you very much. Our last order of business is an A and R. I just have to find my minutes. I mean, my agenda.
People aren't staying for the A and R?
What's that?
Nobody stayed for the A and R.
I know, what the heck? No, I wanted to thank them for being here and they all left. Guys, I need like a 20 second bio break. Give me a second.
Yep, I'm going to get the A and R drawing up on my screen, so.
All right.
Let's see. Is everybody seeing that plan?
I see it, Charles.
Great.
I'm back. I don't know about Jamie.
Sure, where?
All right, back.
Right. So I think we're all here. Mark, are you here?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay, I've only got, I only, I guess when I go into the screen share thing, I don't, I don't see everybody. Let me, I do. Excuse me.
If you can enlarge this a bit, that would be helpful too.
It's my full screen. Let me see. I can enlarge it.
All right, great. Thank you.
Better? Okay. So this is the approval not required plan endorsement for 398 Deerfield Street, parcel 11-5, submitted by Meadows Cafe and Golf Center. So it looks like.
A, B, and C parcels, but I wasn't quite making out what's happening here.
Right. Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not completely self-explanatory.
Yeah, it wasn't intuitive to me either.
And nothing from Eric? Charles, guidance to you?
No. You know, and so it, it looks. So wasn't this, wasn't this, this was the property that came before us for, for a cannabis retail store, right?
Okay, yep.
Here. I mean, the little, the little country club inn. So maybe it has something to do with, with, you know, making this a separate, a separate piece of property. This looks like it would be a developed lot here. Maintains the 65 feet of frontage is required for this to be, for the golf course itself to remain a legal lot. So it looks like it's, you know, my guess is, is that it's, is that it's it's just, you know, looking down the road for how this property is going to be used. If all the frontages are there and, you know, and these things all have to be submitted as like conforming to zoning and Eric's done his homework, so I don't, I don't, I don't see any issues here. Anybody else?
Well, I'll just say that I, I understand Eric always assures us anything submitted would meet, you know, the guidelines. On the other hand, we're charged with endorsing it. It, it, when it says a approval not required, doesn't mean it doesn't come before the planning board. So we are supposed to endorse this, and it would always be good if, and I didn't know if we knew Eric was coming or not coming tonight or not, but to get some explanation of one of these things. Just because it's, it's very tough to act when you're totally in the dark because you're just acting on faith. Because this is, as Jamie said, this is intuitively obvious what is happening here. Are there any notes on the, what are the notes on the bottom left there? Can you zoom those up? Thank you. Oh, that's nothing. Okay.
Yeah, there's nothing helpful there.
Standard. Okay, so I'm a little.
I mean, the inset map in the top left there, you can see the whole thing. You can kind of see two lots being carved off meet the requirements. I don't know. I guess it's not that crazy. It just typically we have a story affiliated with it. I mean, they look like two lots, you know, it's, they probably, it's probably fine.
Yeah, so it's kind of like, I think there's an existing drive that rolls around here. They're just, they're just wanting to maintain that easement through parcel A to get to parcel C, that's the existing access. There, there is no real existing road or route down through here. They are able to maintain their access here.
Right, because that's, yeah, that's a power line easement there.
I mean, so. I mean, so this is, this is, you know, prepared by a, uh, you know, a licensed surveyor and, you know, his, his stamp. You know, it's, that's this, uh, not required is certifying that, you know, this, these, these are all conforming. I mean, it, it is nice to have a story, but, but we reviewed that one out on Colrain Road, which was very complicated and, and nobody seemed to have a story on that one, including Eric. We passed it.
Yeah, um, I'll move that we make a positive. What are we doing? We're voting?
We, we endorse the.
I vote that we approve the A and R plan.
It's actually endorse because it's, approval's not required, but we endorse it, I think.
Plan endorsement. Yep.
Well, on the, it's called that in the agenda, but well, the vote language he has in here says approve.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that you, uh, Charles?
Yes, it was.
Thanks.
All in favor? I mean, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Put, put me down, Jamie, as sure why not?
All right, you got it.
Not what the heck?
Who knows? The public's off now. Like, what are these cool cats doing? Okay, I would also like to move that we authorize, uh, the chairman, Chairman Roberts, to sign the A and R plan.
Second.
Um, I think I would, I would like to discuss this in depth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? I'll do it. Thank you. Um, board and staff reports? Anybody have anything to, of interest to share with the board? George?
Well, more of a question about board membership. Uh, one is I wondered if, uh, Mark has considered, uh, pursuing full board membership. Don't want to put you on the spot, but I was just wondering.
Mark, do it.
Have you discussed this before, George, or is this kind of coming out of some time going by? I mean, I know that when I first stepped in, we talked about the reality that there was an opening. Did we discuss this in a prior meeting where I said I would think about it or?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Um, because I have thought about it, but I just don't really remember us discussing it. But I mean, it, it just feels like if there's, the initial thinking with the mayor was more just kind of like, listen, if I'm coming in kind of new and it's potentially people more experienced, knowing these have been kind of not politicized appointments, when people take the appointments seriously, perhaps it makes more sense for me to start as an alternate and kind of, you know, address a learning curve, put in some time and then deal with an opening. But it's been months and months and no one else seems to really even be throwing in for it. And so I'm already kind of doing this commitment. So if it makes sense, I would do it. Does that mean that I would then just contact the mayor's office and ask to be considered to be appointed to the full seat? To follow the regular appointment process? Or is that something that you do, Charles, to like? Well, no, I think, no, I think, I think, well, there's a plot complication in that, in that, um, uh, a woman named Emily Nash, um, has, uh, submitted her resume to the, to the, um, no, Emily, Emily Eash, E A S H. She's a, she's an attorney with Donovan, Robson Donovan, that at Springfield, lives in Greenfield. And she forwarded, um, her resume to, to the mayor, who I think forwarded it on the 27th to the city council, which was the last day available, um, for that. So this was an, and this was an email I got two days ago. Um, so I think that, you know, I, I think, Mark, if you, I think you would be, um, in, 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 you know, in natural order of, of, of ascension, if you wanted to move forward, um, with your experience into, into the full, uh, member, uh, full voting member, then, um, you should express that interest to the mayor and make sure that she gets your, forwards your name along the city council along with Emily's and Emily would, 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 would step in as an alternate.
It really is the mayor's discretion, I think. And it's not automatic that one would go from, someone could come directly into a full seat at the mayor's discretion, I believe.
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, well, I mean, Charles, have you had the chance to see this resume or application or interest? Does anybody know anything? Do people have any reaction to the applicant? Well, I, I read her resume. I haven't met her. I haven't talked to her. Um, I, I don't know. I don't really know much about her, um, about, uh, so, um, I, I don't, I don't have an informed, I don't, I don't have any. Frankly, I'm perfectly content to stay in the raw. I think that my considering stepping forward was more just like, well, this is silly if we have to vote for me to vote at every meeting for a year. That's silly, you know, but I, I do still feel like there is a learning curve and I'm, I'm happy to continue to be an alternate. And thus far, there's been a lot to learn and, and a lot to vote on. I, I'm not burning to take that seat if there was no red flags around the applicant or anything like that. I don't mind it just kind of playing out where that seat gets filled by somebody and I then want, you know, if I want to continue doing this as a full voting member, when one of you guys retires, I can advocate that. Well, I mean, I, 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 I really appreciate your contributions. You, you, you had a, you had a frank and refreshing perspective on things and, uh, and, and I think it's, I think it's good. And you, and you've, and you have, you've had experience working on, you know, on, you know, on, on town boards and town ref of politics and so, and I know you would have a lot to offer. So I would, I would encourage you to, just to, to reach out to the mayor if you're interested in, in stepping up. I guess there is something about like after putting in this time to kind of lose the ability to vote consistently. I mean, I, I, as alternates, we always have the right to engage in deliberation, even if we're not casting a vote, correct? Like that's, or just, that's your discretion as chair to kind of? Yeah, well, I did it for years, so I got away with it. So, yeah. Yeah, yeah. You know what? I may, maybe I'll just let the mayor know that months in, I, I'm, I'm willing to do that and write the whole things at her discretion. She might even decide like, listen, there's already somebody kind of moving forward on the agenda and I'm not muddying these waters or whatever, then she can make that decision. But I could, I could reach out to her tomorrow and just let her know that I'd be interested and willing. Would you like me to? Would you like me to reach out to her also on your behalf, just to sort of chime in? I, I think that if you feel like it would be good to kind of have a consistent voting presence from somebody who's already been around a while, it probably wouldn't, it would probably impact Roxanne's thinking about what makes sense. All right. And A, A, Amy, I didn't mean to leave you out of the conversation. I mean, you, you've been around longer than Mark has. I, I'm assuming you're, 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 you're satisfied with, with, um, where things are for now?
This is like Game of Thrones. I can't believe that Mark has come along and.
Upstage him.
Hell. I'm just delighted that Mark is here and, uh, I think he'd make a great voting member. I also think Emily would be great. Um,
Do you know Emily?
I do. Um, she's a young attorney in town. She's worked at Clarkdale. Um, I just think she's a interesting, young, refreshing, um, presence. I think she'd be great.
Good. That's, 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 that's good to hear.
And I hope you know, Amy, I, um, didn't ask you out of respect for the strong position you'd stated previously, and I assumed the reasoning, the rationale was still the same, so.
Yeah, and you know, the pandemic has been difficult on rest, the restaurant industry. So I, um, I don't know that the timing of the meetings is always going to work for me.
Hmm, yeah.
Well, it's, it's, it's great. It's great to have you here and, uh, uh, appreciate that you, you're being able to make the time for that as we all do, so.
And glad you're hanging in there with your business. I know it must be so tough.
Yep. All right, so, um, so Mark, you, you'll, you'll reach out to the mayor. I'll reach out to the, I'll, I'll, I'll give her a call. I tried, tried calling her today, but she was out. She had the day off. Easily. Because I, it's, it's a good thing I called too, because I, I, I wasn't able to start the meeting and I had to call, um, uh, Jim Strathus and get all the pass codes and information. And it would have been horrible if we had not been able to have that.
Why is this so complicated? I don't understand. I'm on Zoom call. I'm on calls all day long and I never, I know this is a different format, but it just seems like half the time it doesn't work.
I know. Well, well, I, I now know all the secret codes. Last week what happened was.
You can never get hit by a bus, Charles.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, last week it was double booked. So the, the Parks and Recreation Department had a meeting at six. It was going on, it was ongoing at 6:30 and so we weren't able to break into it. It was a scheduling.
Sounds like it was, sounds like it was a totally unforeseeable conflict.
Why? I just don't understand this technology. Why it can't have multiple channels or something?
We, we have two platforms. We have two WebEx platforms and then, and you, and, and it was double booked. It's just, but I, but thank you all so much for being flexible and being able to participate in a, in a good discussion. And I think that hopefully the public left happy and it'll be a nice story in the paper tomorrow.
And I always wonder what quotes they're gonna pull. Um, all right, we'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
No, no, more business before that. Um, Amy, Amy, I wanted to say thank you for your, uh, endorsement of the person who was just, uh, uh, nominated by the mayor. That's good to hear. That's someone you know.
Yeah.
Think highly of.
I think, you know, it's always nice to see young people step up for, um, for boards. And it's always good to have an attorney.
Nice. Um, I did want to check Charles about, uh, next meetings, but also I had a, as I mentioned to you last week, I had a, um, request for the board about a couple future meetings. I don't know what you want to start with. Um, you don't know, it sounds like Jamie saw next week's meeting is canceled, but you don't know that, Charles?
I, I could have sworn that Eric told me that, 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 that they, um, the, the, the Well Street site plan was for, is it the 5th of November? Is that, would that be a normally scheduled meeting?
Yeah. I, I just pasted the calendar in the chat. It could just be wrong, but I usually just don't go on here. I just assume we have a meeting until I hear otherwise. But the way it shows up right now is it says canceled in all caps for the meeting on the 5th. And then for some reason, it doesn't list our meeting on the 19th. So it could just be flat out wrong, or maybe Eric knows something that we don't.
Yeah. I spoke with him yesterday and, um,
Be good to know soon if we could, just for planning purposes.
Yeah, let me see if I could find an email from him that might, that might, um, talk about it.
Should I mention my other proposal while you're looking?
Sure.
The, uh, this is related to the, um, uh, Sustainable Greenfield Master Plan Implementation Committee. We typically meet on the fourth Thursdays and on, um, uh, in November, that would be Thanksgiving Day and in December, that would be Christmas Eve. So the committee has requested to meet on the third Wednesday, uh, Thursday, uh, which would be November 19th and December 17th. And previously, it wouldn't be an issue because that committee meets 5:00 to 6:30 and then the planning board used to meet at 7:00. Um, so, um, I wondered if, um, and then they were talking about bumping it to a little bit later too. So I wondered if this board would be okay with starting at our old seven o'clock time on November 19th and December 17th. That way I could attend both meetings.
Okay, I, I was, I was, I was looking up through my emails when you, you were telling, so, so, so move the planning, move the planning board meetings to, um, what, which two days again?
On November 19th and December 17th, start at seven o'clock rather than six o'clock. That's my request.
I'm fine with that.
Instead of six?
Say again?
Seven o'clock instead of six o'clock?
Yes. That's the request.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we can make that work. Um, do you want to, do you want to send an email out to, to, to us and Eric making that, making that request? So make, to make sure that it all, it all, that.
Sure.
I don't want to mess it up.
There's no objection from anyone who's here now? Okay, great. Thank you. The, the other scheduling thing I want to ask is I know that we had talked about, um, regarding the lid, uh, proposals, uh, because we had finished those, right?
Right.
Um, so scheduling the joint public hearing and kind of the co-public hearing where we're going to do the, um, on the same evening, do the, um, for the, um, subdivision regs, do that public hearing. So I wondered if that was going along at all or?
Well, so, so Eric, the joint EDC meeting to talk about, um, these, uh, zoning amendments on the 19th, but that would actually now be, yeah, so November 19th. But that would, that would, that work. So that was, that was one of the dates you, you suggested, right, George? Or was that?
It is. So that would, if we made the change and that you're talking about the joint hearing and then followed by our subdivision hearing?
Yeah. So a public hearing needs to be set for three zoning amendments, the one submitted by Mr. Colson and the two submitted by the ZB, by the, by the ZBA. And so our public hearing will be a joint hearing with the Economic Development Committee. And it's proposed to be on, uh, November 19th and, and we'll be hosting this one as the EDC hosts the last one.
So he probably was thinking of six o'clock, but since everyone's agreeable on this board, we could say it would start at seven o'clock.
Yeah, I think there's enough, I think there's enough, uh, lead time to make that change.
Okay. I will get that out right after this evening. Thanks.
And then in terms of the fifth, I, I, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure that's when we're going to be doing the site review for, for the Well Street. And, and, um, I'll confirm that with Eric tomorrow and let you know. He's, he's at a, uh, you know, he's a, a planner seminar this week, so he's, he's out. I do, I was able to reach him today. Asked him about, uh, so I'll try, I'll try to get him tomorrow. All right. Anything else? Hearing nothing?
Move to adjourn.
Thanks.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, well, well, I'll, I'll, I'll know more tomorrow about whether we're meeting on the 5th and I want you to know.